He's off with a bit of the flu bug and hopefully he'll be back soon. We certainly wish him well. So, we'll open the public hearing and I will call on the Director of Corporate Administration to read aloud the notice of the public hearing.
Thank you. As required by the Local Government Act, this public hearing is being held to hear from anyone who may be affected by the proposed change to the city zoning by law. The proposed amendment in bylaw number 4226 is to amend the wording of a regulation included in the RS2 Residential Single and Duplex Zone. The third bullet in subsection 8.2.12 regarding the minimum site area per parcel will have the word horizontally removed and replaced with the word vertically. And there are no written comments received.
Thank you. Do we have Counselor Schuman there?
We are disphoning her now.
Okay. I'll call for the first time then for comments from the gallery. Twice for comments and hearing none. For the third time for any comments from the gallery. Hearing none. We'll close the public hearing. Good morning, Counselor.
Good morning.
And we'll open the regular meeting of council and we'll start with new and counselor Counselor Wilber's not here yet. Any other counselor have anything for the good of the craft? Hearing none.
Mr.?
I'm sorry, Counselor Parslow? Nothing?
No, I said let's turn it to me.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Let's, yeah, sorry.
I did have a couple of things that I did want to-
Are you guys using the microphones yet? Because I can't hear.
We are trying.
Yeah, we're trying, Cheryl here.
How does this sound, Cheryl?
It sounds like I can't hardly hear you guys.
All right.
Okay.
Mr. Vorderman not speaker?
Your worship, perhaps we could-
Go ahead.
-recess until-
No, no, no. Let's just move it on here. Pay attention. Are you there, Cheryl?
Yeah.
I don't know what we can do here. Counselor Malkinson has some comments-
There we are.
...on the new and counselor business. So, go ahead, Counselor.
Well, stop. Stop a little better.
Thank you.
Good to hear. Yes, good morning, your worship. There is just a couple of things that I wanted to make council aware of this morning and they're both two events that are going on at the library this summer. First was the Summer Reading Club, which has seen, again, a, you know, resounding success. The slightly better numbers than last year. And the second project that I wanted to make council aware of was the effort that's going on to replace the book shelving that's in the library right now as well. It's, well, donations and, well, donations are being sought from a number of different groups and businesses in the city. And I think it's well underway to, underway and on schedule to having the shelving be replaced by the end of this year, so.
Thank you. Any other new counselor business? All right, then we'll move to minutes. Section three. Can we do this all with one motion?
Okay.
Counselor Parslow?
I'd like to move that the minutes presented be approved.
Seconded by Counselor Malkinson. Any comment, questions, all in favor? It's carried. Cheryl, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Unless, unless you speak up or object, I'll assume you're agreeing to the motions that are here. Is that okay with you?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay. Any business arising? Correspondence, five, one. Counselor Parslow?
I'd move that this letter be received.
Seconded by Counselor Malkinson. Question or comments? Counselor Parslow?
Question to staff. Do we have anything in the works that we might, for next budget, that might avail ourselves of these funds?
Through your worship, we do not at the moment. If we are able to acquire land for a potential widening of Seventeenth Street, there would be a need for some relocation of Hydro there. But that's, we haven't accomplished that yet.
Thank you. Have we voted on this? I guess we have. All in favor? Carried. Five, two is a letter from Jay Schlosser and Gary McIsaac regarding the achievement of carbon neutrality for 2013. Counselor Malkinson?
Move that we receive this letter for information, your worship? Or, Mr. Chair?
Seconded by Counselor Kenny. Comments, questions? All in favor? Five, three is a letter from Darren Crookshank, the Mile Zero Shriners, regarding a donation to the Giza Shriners Children's Services Society. Counselor Parslow?
I have some questions about this, but I'll move to just put it on the table, something that, move that we receive this-
I can't hear counsel. I'm sorry.
I'd move that we receive this letter.
Thank you very much. Seconded by Counselor Kenny. Comments, questions? Go ahead.
How many free passes have we got in the works now on an annual basis?
Through your worship, your policy is not to give them away for purposes like this, but you have a, this, that pass is worth about $1,700, the family pass. But you have a program by which disadvantaged groups or individuals can obtain passes that's run by community services.
So, the letters asking for passes, what's your pleasure in that matter? If we-
My motion is to receive the-
Okay. All in favor? Carried, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Parslow. I'm looking forward to your guidance through what the rest of that is. Five, four is a letter from Richard Truscott, the Canadian Federation of Independent Business Folks, regarding the UBCM convention. Counselor Malkinson?
I'm having a little bit of difficulty with the wording in this area. Is this organization requesting a meeting or are they just making us aware of their presence at this, at UBCM?
I think, I think they're saying that they're there. If we want to meet with them, we're welcome to do so, but we should receive it in some fashion before we get carried away, I guess. Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, I just viewed this as standard fare of saying, for this UBCM meeting, so I just moved that we receive this letter for information.
Seconded by Counselor Kenny. Any other questions? All in favor? Carried. Letter from Fay Cleese, President of the South P. Seniors Association regarding support for grant application for NDIS.
I move that-
Thank you, Counselor Schuman. Seconded by Counselor Parslow. Questions? All in favor? Carried. It's not quite nine o'clock, so we'll move to number seven, one is a report from the Chief Administrator Officer regarding the ALR consultation. This is a fairly lengthy one, isn't it?
Yeah.
Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, I'd like to move the recommendation when I can scroll down to it. I have some questions, but this is taking me some time here. Am I-
While you're doing that, could I have a second there then, please? Counselor Kenny, thank you.
Here we go. I move that report number fourteen dash one seven zero from the Chief Administrative Officer for Agricultural Land Commission consultation be received. Further, that council approve the eleven recommended responses contained in the body of the report. And further, that staff be directed to forward the responses to the Ministry of Agriculture prior to the orders, the twenty-second deadline.
Seconded by Counselor Kenny. Comments? Counselor Malkinson?
Well, I'm sure that, I like Counselor Parslow, do have a couple of questions about the material in the report. I really, really want to applaud staff for all the information that was gathered in preparation for it. It seemed very, very thorough and looked at issues from a number of different angles. So, I wanted to say that to begin with. But I suppose as I read through it, I did agree with a number of the different answers to the questions, but my particular question or the one that I wanted to begin conversation on was question seven. And that's, should the parameters be expanded when non-agricultural related businesses are allowed to operate on ALR properties in zone two? Perhaps we'll read out the recommendation from staff. The response to that would be that the City of Dawson Creek respond to question seven by encouraging the Ministry of Agriculture to expand the parameters for when non-agriculture related businesses are allowed to operate on ALR properties in zone two unless these properties are located within municipal boundaries or agree to come within municipal boundaries. You know, perhaps before I begin, maybe I could ask staff to elaborate on that a little bit? I, yeah, that would be great.
Through your worship, as you see by the several paragraphs above that recommendation, that recommendation is supported by the stakeholder group that was set up. Not my recommendation, but the opportunity to carve off a part of your agricultural land, perhaps up to fifteen hectares, and use it for servicing shops, pipe yards for oil and gas exploration without application to the Agricultural Land Commission. I cannot recommend that you accept that proposal. And the reason is that would create an unlevel playing field where it would be vastly less expensive for an oil and gas servicing company to set up in the rural area where they would build to rural standards. Gravel parking lots, septic fields, cisterns. They would not contribute taxes basically to anyone. The regional district has very few services that are taxed out there. They wouldn't contribute to municipal taxation. Most of them would be outside the area of building inspection. And you would be asking the lots within your, the landowners within your community, including the two new applications you have in front of you from Loyzelle and Shipton, to somehow compete with that. Where someone buying that land within the city, coming on to your, your water and sewer servicing facilities, would have to pay considerably more to develop their lot. So, out of the oil and gas boom, you would get nothing. You would get no taxation. You would get no new customers on your water and sewer systems to help defer the costs that you have coming in those functions. It would be an unlevel playing field. It has worked out not very well for Fort St. John to have the Charlie Lake unincorporated area with all of those realities to it. It has not worked out for Grand Prairie. I don't believe it would work out for you. That's my opinion. That's what I'm giving to you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, well, that's one, that's the big one. I wanted to get, make sure I understood it and I concur with our CIO for sure on that one, but I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that. The other one that's, catches my attention, I mean, some of these things, with all due respect to the work that's been done, which is excellent, that some of them are, the conclusions are obvious.
Yeah.
But question, number ten, should great, question was, should greater clarity be provided on what constitutes an agritourism activity that is allowable in the ALR without an application? And if so, what parameters should be established? And the recommendation is that the City of Dawson Creek respond to question ten by encouraging the Ministry of Agriculture to provide greater clarity on what constitutes agritourism activity that is allowable in the ALR without an application, et cetera, et cetera. I must, may have missed this, so I apologize. What are some of the, what have been some of the issues that have gone on that led to this need? I mean, I'm supporting it, but have there been some problems in the province I'm talking about that you're referring to, Jim?
Yeah, through your worship, the most vibrant issue in our area has been the issue of rodeo grounds. And there has not been sufficient clarity about whether something like the Dawson Creek and District Extraversion Association Annual Fall Fair is tied to or related to agritourism and could potentially be housed on land within the Agricultural Land Reserve. And as you know, there is a similar rodeo ground planned for Fort St. John. So, the recommendation is rather than on a case-by-case basis, there should be a definitional parameter around that. In other areas, what constitutes agritourism for the purposes of allowing accommodation like a Dude Ranch has been similarly problematic. Our own tourism function has been working strenuously to facilitate and encourage these kind of agritourism with accommodation initiatives or projects and can't do so reliably until those definitions are firmer.
Thank you, Counselor Parslow.
That's it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. What's your pleasure? All in favor? And it's carried. Thank you. It's not nine o'clock, so we'll move on to seven, two, which is a report fourteen one six seven from the Chief Financial Officer regarding consolidated actual budget variance. Counselor Malkinson?
I move that we receive this consolidated actual budget variance report for information.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Kenny. Any questions or comments? All in favor? It's carried. Number, item seven, three is another report from the Chief Financial Officer regarding the post-budget bylaw approvals. Counselor Malkinson?
Move that we receive this report from the Chief Financial Officer regarding post-budget bylaw approvals and that council approve the transactions and funding reallocations as identified.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Kenny. Questions and comments? All in favor? Jim, go ahead.
Through your worship, it should be noted that the reason for this report is that the changes that are identified are not outside the budget envelopes that council previously approved. So, there's no need to amend the budget. But one of the learnings from the Auditor General for Local Government that they published with their oscillant audit was that even though many things fall within the authorities of, of staff members, largely myself, and don't affect the total budget, there should still be a consolidated reporting out so that council has the opportunity to track all that. So, as you know, opinions vary in the province in our business about the Auditor General for Local Government, but the Chief Financial Officer and I have found that many of the recommendations that were made in the learnings document are just good sense, things we hadn't thought of and things we shouldn't be doing. So, this is just one of them.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Ready for the vote? All in favor? Carried. Counselor Schuman, are you still there?
I'm here. I'm just muted so you don't hear all the little birds chirping.
Okay, okay.
Children playing, et cetera, et cetera.
You can hear us okay though now?
Yeah, I hear great.
Thank you. Report number seven point four is a report from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding Airport Socioeconomic Impact Study. Counselor Parslow?
Move that report number fourteen dash one six five and the Director of Corporate Administration for Airport Socioeconomic Impact Study be received for discussion. Further, that the medium and long-term capital projects from the Dawson Creek Airport Sustainability Report include a design for runway extension, preserving airport operations by regaining airside land and moving public works, construction of an airplane hangar and apron expansion. Community Economic Development Officer extending the runway be referred to the 2015 Strategic Planning Discussions.
Seconded by Counselor Kenny. Okay, all in favor? Carried, thank you. Seven point five is a report from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding the Economic Development Advisory Committee. Counselor Malkinson, thank you.
I move that-
Move it along, Harry.
I move that we receive this report from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding the Economic Development Advisory Committee and that Lynn, Ms. Lynn O'Dwyers request to join the committee be approved.
And that's seconded by Counselor Kenny. Questions, comments? All in favor? Carried.
What, I did have a bit of a question, your worship.
Sorry.
It's still, I think beneficial for all of council's information to ask just the current state of the committee, their next meetings and their current, current goings-on. Is there anybody here today that can speak to that?
Probably Ms. Ginter.
Through your worship, there has not been a meeting date set. The committee's still active. The last meeting that they attended was the workshop with council. And they're probably just waiting for some direction from that. And the mayor did have that item on as mayor's business for this meeting, but since he's away today, I'm assuming that it'll be brought up in September.
Some, your worship, some direction from the economic development workshop that council had about a month ago, hey?
Mm-hmm. Just the further, the further action from that workshop.
Now, are we going to be receiving a report from that or is it going to be some action that's proposed by the mayor?
The mayor was going to speak to it, probably.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Ready for the vote? All in favor? Carried. Seven point six is a report from the Director of Infrastructure Sustainable Development regarding a development permit at Vic Turner Road, Vic Turner Airport Road. Counselor Parslow?
Move that report fourteen dash one seven two from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development Redevelopment Permit Number eleven dash zero one amendment be received. Further, the amended development permit number eleven dash zero one for the development of a hundred and fifty by one hundred metal clad shop at fifty-one Vic Turner Road be authorized in principle and issued upon successful completion of the required ten-day notification period.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Schuman, thank you. Questions or-
I'm just trying to DNA every now and again.
That a girl. Questions or comments? Ready for the vote? All in favor? Carried. Item seven, seven is a report from the Director of Infrastructure Sustainable Development regarding a permit at Hundred Sixteenth Avenue for Dolan Contracting. Counselor Kenny?
I'll move the report number- (music) -from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding development permit application for Shelley Dolan of Dolan Contracting Limited be received. And further, the development permit number fourteen sixteen for the placement of a modular office trailer at two oh eight Hundred Sixteenth Avenue be authorized in principle and issued upon successful completion of the required ten-day notification period and receipt of the financial security in the amount of $12,000.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Malkinson. Questions and comments? Counselor Malkinson, you have a question?
Yeah, your worship, was this just a, an oversight by the developer or just wondering how it came to be placed in the incorrect spot, this trailer?
Yeah, through your worship, it's, they have a large area that they use and it's multiple lots. And so, this is an interior lot line that they're setting this unit close to. So, just as we go through this process in order to clean that up and ensure there's no problems down the road, we'll get that interior lot line.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Ready for the vote? All in favor? Carried. Number, report seven point eight is a report from the Director of Infrastructure regarding development permit for nine thousand twenty-seventh street from Alberta Gas. Counselor Parslow?
I move the report number fourteen dash one seven seven from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development Redevelopment Permit Application from Outer Gas Limited be received. Further, that development permit number fourteen dash fourteen for the development of electrified natural gas processing and storage facility on proposed lot ten, I won't read out the legal descriptions, if I be authorized in principle and issued upon successful completion of the required ten-day notification period and receipt of the financial security in the amount of $92,000.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Kenny. Chief?
I will just note, your worship, that although the provincial government isn't having any luck getting LNG plants built on the West Coast, we'll have one built in Dawson.
There you are. We need to, if we get a refinery here now, she'd be good. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Malkinson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question. I noticed two times in the report, it was mentioned that the plant will occupy twenty-five percent of the area and seventy-five percent of the area in its lot, I believe, will be unimproved, undistributed clay material. I'm just wondering, is there any, will that stay as is in the future or is there not much guarantee on that? You know, as I see the plan as proposed, it fits well into the puzzle, but much area around it looks like it could be used for development in the future.
Through your worship, that entire area is zone M2, so it could be, the entire property could be developed into this use or similar.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Cheryl.
So, we've run into this issue around electricity, the amount of electricity that we're getting, and I'm curious to know how this development will impact that. Jim, can you tell me that?
Through your worship, as you know, we are very short of total power in the area. We do not have power to the N1 standard required by legislation. The Dawson Creek area transmission line called the D cap project is underway now and is expected to provide power by next year, but it is already going to be outdated and there is a second project underway that you've been getting notifications from. So, BC Hydro believes that they will have the power that the community needs now, not only for its current usage, but for growth by 2018. In the meantime, industrial developments like this are generally moving to natural gas fired power until Hydro's available.
Thank you. Anything else, Counselor Schuman?
No, that's what I expected to hear.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, you ready for the vote? All in favor? Carried. Seven point nine is a director from the director, report from the Director of Infrastructure regarding a permit for Dennis and Teresa Polcock, five twenty-five Hundred Fourteenth Avenue. Counselor Parslow?
The report, I move that report number fourteen dash one seven eight from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development Redevelopment Permit Application from Dennis and Teresa Polcock be received. Further, that development permit number fourteen dash fifteen for the development of a shop at five two five Hundred Fourteenth Avenue be authorized in principle and issued upon successful completion of the required ten-day notification period and receipt of the financial security in the amount of $2,500.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Kenny. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor? It's carried. Do we taking a break, Counselor?
I think we should do. It's nine o'clock.
All right, you get eighty seconds.
And then we'll resume with delegations. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. Delegations. Our first delegation is Janet Toof, Angela Ray, Martha Funk, Heidi Cooks-Cardos regarding Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorder Committee.
Does worship have the proclamation?
Yes.
Come on up. I'll just read the proclamation out and then we'll ask you for some comments. Whereas children are our most important resource, it is our responsibility to care for, nurture, and protect them. and protect them. And whereas statistics indicate that individuals with fetal alcohol spectrum disorder face the risk of mental challenges or learning disabilities, early school dropout, homelessness, addictiveness, trouble with the law, and mental illness. And whereas fetal alcohol spectrum disorder is preventable, and to reduce the incidence of fetal alcohol spectrum disorder, it is essential that pregnant women, their partners, and the community are provided with support and information. And whereas parents, professionals, individuals living with fetal alcohol spectrum disorder, and other people around the world will observe the Ninth International Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorder Awareness Day on September the ninth, two thousand and fourteen, with a minute of reflection at nine oh nine a.m. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim September the ninth, two thousand and fourteen, as Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorder Awareness Day in Dawson Creek.
I just want to say, thank you. We're just sort of honoring—there also a bylaw that was passed in Dawson Creek in November of two thousand and four. Bylaw sixty-seven thirty-seven, sixty-seven. And so we're just—so that they don't serve alcohol to the state bracket women. And we'd just like to enforce that. And also, last week, we got a message from White Horse, and they like to challenge the community of Dawson Creek. They put out bumper stickers, and they're just wondering on a provincial level, is there's anything more that the folks would like to do. I'm Janet from Aboriginal Family Services, the Zanna from Aboriginal Family Services, and Mrs. Angela from Paxis. And Heidi's not with us today. She's on her birthday.
Any questions from council or the meeting? Councillor Parslow?
Can you tell me about the date—the time, nine oh nine? Is that—what's that?
September the ninth.
Nine oh nine. Why—is there something significant about that?
Right, because you're pregnant for nine months.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And also because of the medical court and it's the ninth month, the ninth year. And we just honor it internationally.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Councillor. Any other?
Thank you. Thank you.
I was scared to ask that question, Councillor Parslow, because I didn't know the answer. Our next delegation is Samantha McCray, United Way Northern B.C., in attendance regarding proclamation of United Way Month and flag raising event. Oh, there you are, okay. Come on up. I'll read this out first. Whereas United Way Northern B.C. contributes to health, safety, and well-being of Northern B.C. communities by investing in programs and services that ensure people who are struggling get back on their feet, that people get healthy, stay healthy, both physically and mentally, and that kids get the education and opportunities they deserve. And whereas United Way improves lives, builds community by engaging individuals and mobilizing collective action, now therefore, I do hereby proclaim September as United Way Month in Dawson Creek.
Well, I would like to hear the word of the United—do you just give an overview of the word of United Way in the—in our community?
I actually can't because I'm just here on behalf of—
On behalf, okay.
We're here, but I'm sorry about that.
Okay. Listened to you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item six three is Mr. Swanson regarding a utility bill, I guess, at fourteen forty-four ninety-sixth Avenue. Arnie, come on forward.
Good to see you. Well, I'm not really here on behalf of myself. I'm here on behalf of a tenant, one of my tenants. And he suffered a very, very large water bill. I've got a building with a crawl space and concrete around it.
Sorry, is there a mic for him?
Actually, if you want to take—sit at the delegation table, Arnie, there's a microphone there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Okay, can you hear me, Cheryl?
No.
Yeah, I can hear you now, thank you.
Okay, thanks. So anyways, my tenants' names are Julius and Cheryl Benoknok, and they're from the Philippines. And Julius has been here almost two years and Cheryl about a year. Her and her family joined them. Well, anyways, I guess there was a water leak underneath in the crawl space from the water tank, hot water tank. And it caused a bill of about seven hundred dollars, the very first one. So anyways, he was pretty devastated. He had no idea. I don't know, he's never owned a home before where he's come from, and you would think that he would have heard the hissing sound or something, but maybe underneath he didn't hear it. So he told his wife, they basically had to really—they went on water rationing, they did everything they could. He made payments. And then Cheryl's dad, father died in the Philippines, and so they take off for three weeks. And they left it and came back, and then they got their next water bill, and then he came to see me and said there's something very, very wrong. So I went into the crawl space and I found to my horror about three feet, almost right to the top, two feet at least, I guess, of water. And it had leached out into the ground everywhere, and it started to come through to the front of the lot there. And it had been doing that for probably a month, but he didn't—it didn't twig on him or anything, I guess. So he has a thousand dollar and a seven hundred dollar water bill, which he's finding very, very difficult to—to address. And I just don't know—he—I asked him to come to city council here, and he is very, very shy. He was no way that this gentleman is ever going to ever show up in front of people. I mean, I find this probably as difficult as anything myself, but I'm pleading on his behalf. But anyways, I said, you know what? I will go. At least I can ask and we can see if there can be any relief at all of any kind. I don't think he's expecting the whole water bill because he does know that he played a part in it too. I've talked to him, and I said, you know, from now on, if you ever get a very expensive water bill, well, I think that you should probably see me immediately, or, you know, start to listen maybe to the sounds in your house a little bit more and that. So I guess that's about all that I—I can say. Are there any questions or—
So you're asking for—
Well, he's wondered if there was any relief from the water bill in that case. That's really all that he's really asking for. And I said, I will go and I will ask city council.
Councillor Malkinson?
Well, I—just a question for yourself. Arnie, you said that he had noticed it before he left to the Philippines? That he had noticed that his bill was out of whack, or he had noticed the leak?
No, he had. The seven hundred dollar bill, I believe it was, the first one, he thought it was exorbitantly high, but he had no reason, like, he did not have a clue. And he's very busy with his roofing. He's away for two weeks quite often at a time. Henderson Roofing, I guess, is who he works for. And they work—they've been working in Alberta. And so it was just a combination of events that just got him a seventeen hundred dollar water bill.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I understand that we'll bring this back under mayor's business for the debate and discuss. Is that correct?
If you wish to do so, Your Worship.
Thank you.
That's fine.
Thank you, Arnie.
Well, thank you all for hearing me.
Okay. Item six four—
Hey.
Cheryl, go ahead.
I was just thanking the delegation, so I don't want more now.
Okay, sure. Okay, item—thank you, Arnie. Item six four is Mr. Roberts, Mr. Young, Mr. McCafferty, and Ms. McCafferty regarding the Legion Office Space. Come on forward, people. Good to see y'all. Go ahead.
Good morning, Your Worship and councillors. My name is Dave Roberts, and I am the Public Relations Officer for Dawson Creek Royal Canadian Legion Branch One Forty-One. Next to me is Barry Young, who is a past president of the branch, served two terms, and our service officer, Don McCafferty, and his wife Shirley has been a member for many, many years. The reason why we are here is that the Legion is downsizing once more. We are in need of a space for an office. The Legion in Dawson Creek has been active for eighty-two years. And I'll give you a brief history. It was organized in nineteen thirty-two by fifteen World War I veterans who decided they wanted a branch. They applied and received a charter on November the fourth of nineteen thirty-two. Ever since, we've been searching for accommodations where to locate. Initially, they were—had held meetings in the old Carlsonia Theater. And then from there, it was on the Royal Fruit Building on the corner of Hundred and Second Avenue and Tenth Street. Finally, the branch purchased property at the corner of Hundred and Fifth Avenue, and they bought two Army buildings from War Assets Corporation. And they occupied these buildings for a couple of years. But it didn't work out, so they exchanged their property for a lot at nine twenty-five on Hundred and Second Avenue, which is a small building next to the Mile Zero Hotel. You might be familiar with it. The Legion was there for close to twenty years before they needed bigger accommodations, and they built their own building, which was located at Ninth Street and Hundred and Second Avenue. It's now occupied—the prime occupant is Prestige Gifts and Trophies. You're probably familiar with it. But the little building that we occupied for twenty—almost twenty years is still there and in use. It's over seventy years old. It's probably the oldest building being occupied in the city. What we're in need of now, as I mentioned, is space for an office. We were fortunate to have an office in the Curling Club. It was a former tool room, and we adapted it. The size of our office, excuse me, was ten feet by twelve feet, so we don't need a big area. But we want to continue our goal of promoting remembrance of the hundred and twelve thousand Canadians who died in the First, Second World War, the Korean Conflict, and more recently in Afghanistan. But it wasn't just the loss of life. There were so many of the troops that returned that were injured, some of them had lost limbs. And an ailment that wasn't that well-known at that time was PTSD, which is post-traumatic stress—IC syndrome, but it's—what's it called? Disorder. Yes, thank you. Anyway, our branch and most of the branches in the province contribute to a fund to help the returned people in combating BSDT. Over the years, our branch has been looking after a number of—pardon me—charitable groups. We contribute to Meals on Wheels, Step Up and Ride, where possible, to the Salvation Army. We support the Air Cadets. Our building at the corner of Hundred and Second and Ninth was eleven thousand square feet, and quite often, we hosted reunions, wedding receptions. The Rotary Club held their auctions there for a dozen or more years, but it became too large for us to manage. The utilities really killed us. Towards the end, we were paying a gas bill of thirteen hundred a month, and our members weren't imbibing that much. So in two thousand and oh six, we moved to the Coop Mall, and we were there for seven years, and it worked out well for us. But the Coop wanted to expand, and so we had to move on again. And that's when we went to the Curling Club. We don't need a big area, and—but our finances are very low. It just didn't work out at the Curling Club. The revenues generated by the bar just weren't sufficient to help the Curling Club. We put on a number of suppers there, and they accommodated people that wanted to buy a drink. We gave up our license to sell alcoholic beverages when we left the Coop, so we don't have that anymore. But we would like, if possible, council to consider providing a space. Initially, we looked at the O'Brien Center. We approached the school board and found out that they have leased three quarters of the O'Brien Center to the city, so that's why we're here. That's one option. The other is that the South Peace Historical Society Archives will be moving in the next couple of weeks to the new Calvin Crook Center, which would make available that space where they are in the old library development building on the upper level. It's next to the old swimming pool. Most of you are familiar with it. But that would provide a space for us to establish an office. Each year, we organize a poppy campaign to raise money for charitable groups, and it generates probably close to twenty thousand dollars a year that we distribute. The branch can't use that funding for operational costs. It must go to charities. And every time we get a request for assistance, that approval has to come from BCU Con Command in Vancouver. It's a trust fund, and it has helped out the communities for all these years. So that is what our quest is, and I'm open to questions.
Thank you, Dave. Are you saying that the Legion no longer has a canteen?
That is true.
You're kidding.
The peak for our membership was when we celebrated our fiftieth anniversary, and that was in nineteen eighty-two.
Yeah.
And our membership and—members have been dropping—
Yeah.
—answering the last posting.
Yes.
And we're down to probably a little bit better than a hundred members now.
Right. Any questions from council? Councillor Parslow?
Yeah, just the last part of your presentation, your request in consideration of the facility that's currently used by the South Peace Historical Society for Archives. When they vacate that—
That is correct.
—and that's the old library building, offices on the south side, closest to the swimming pool.
That's right.
Okay. There wasn't a second location?
Well, the Brian Center, but—
Oh, yes, yeah.
—that could present problems for security, I believe.
Yeah. Okay. Jim?
Through, Your Worship, I note, Dave, that your letter says that you were to be out by the fifteenth. Are you out, or have they given you some grace on this?
We had contacted them and told them that the month that they gave us was not sufficient time for us to make arrangements to move elsewhere. So we're still—
Have you been by to see if your stuff is out front?
No. We have office equipment and a flag case that's located in one landing of the stairwell, and that's where we keep our ceremonial flags. And we maintain the flag in front of the Curling Club. There wasn't one there before, and thanks to the city's assistance, we took the hardware off of a light standard at the Coop and moved it to in front of what is the Memorial Arena. There should have been a flag there for years.
Are you going to need— Are you going to need a phone line and internet access in your office?
Yes, we are.
Okay, any other questions from council? It sounds like staff's gonna look at perhaps a possible option for you.
That would depend on whether you bring it back up.
Yes.
Under Mayor's business or not, Your Worship.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Dave. We'll bring this back under Mayor's business for consideration and hopefully we can help you out in some way. And I can't believe that there's a Legion without a canteen. It's just mind-boggling to me.
It has been a hardship for us as well.
Yes.
On the other hand, should you be overwhelmed, as I was a couple of Fridays ago, with the desire to have a beverage with Mr. Roberts, they can be found at the Bowling Lanes on Friday afternoons.
Well, that's good to know.
The Corner Pin Lounge.
The Corner Pin Lounge.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dave. Thank you, Don, coming in.
Thank you.
Item six-five is Tara Marrows from the Community Service Department regarding Terry Fox Run Day.
She's coming?
I think it is. Morning. Let me read this out first, Tara, and then we'll talk about it. Whereas the Terry Fox Foundation is an organization of volunteers that allocates donations it receives to cancer research. And whereas this research is essential to promote, to promote prevention, detection, treatment, and hopefully a cure for cancer. And whereas the Terry Fox Foundation provides aid to patients and their families through practical and emotional support. And whereas Terry Fox, and whereas Terry Fox dedicated his life to raising funds for cancer research. And whereas we are committed to continuing the dream that Terry started. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim Sunday, September the fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen, as Terry Fox Run Day in Dawson Creek.
Morning, welcome. Do you have anything special to introduce that you'd like to talk about?
Um, just the same format. It's scheduled on Sunday, September fourteenth. It starts registration at nine AM and then the run starts at ten. Same thing. It's the three, five, and ten-deciometer auction. We use the Dawson Creek Trail, so it's gonna be out at Pioneer Village as a meeting place and sit in the hall. We're just encouraging residents to come down and get involved. It's a family-oriented event, so we really hope that people come as support of Terry Fox. It is the thirty-fourth annual one. Schools are doing them. It is scheduled in the schools. It's there scheduled Wednesday, September the twenty-fourth. So if residents can't come down on Sunday morning, we, people can still be involved in terms of September the fifteenth to the October eleventh. You can raise funds individually and return them to registered banks. But like I said, we're just trying to get people to come out actually on the Run Day on Sunday. And again, it's nine AM registration and the run starts at ten. We'll have a warm-up and businesses will get involved in terms of refreshments and just a good day to come out and support it.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council? Okay, Tara, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item six-six is Ashley Shipton regarding an application for ALR exclusion. Good morning, Ms. Shipton.
Good morning. I'm here today just to ensure that I can answer any questions or address any concerns that you guys, council, might have with our application.
I don't have any. Does council have any? I think the matter's coming up a bit later. There's a report from staff at some point this morning, isn't there? Yeah, there is. Yeah, it's in the books. No, I don't know that anybody has any.
Okay.
Perhaps, Sir, Your Worship, have you had any indication from the Commission whether they're processing applications right now?
I have, I've been in contact with Gordon and he said that he was okay with us, with the city forwarding the application. And we reviewed the fact that it wasn't currently within the SPCDP and he said that was okay, that we would still go through the application.
The only reason I'm asking is some of my colleagues on the Lower Mainland are saying that there seems to be a little, little action out of the Commission right now while they're waiting to find out what their new rules are. I just wondered if you'd been in any way told that your application would be put on a back burner?
Regarding Bill twenty-four?
Yeah.
Yeah, I did actually ask Ron about that also and he said not to postpone the application until Bill twenty-four went through. He said that he didn't feel it would make a big difference in our application.
Okay, thank you very much for coming in.
Okay, thanks.
Six-seven is Mr. Moran Etall regarding, on behalf of Gary Loizell, regarding an application for ALR exclusion. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Basically, like Ashley said, we're here just to answer any questions or concerns anybody has about our application.
Questions from council? I don't think so. There's a report, again, later on in council. Do staff have any questions?
No, it would be the same thing unless you've had a different experience with the Commission.
No, we haven't. We checked into it and they said go ahead and make the application.
So we are actually, that report is coming up pretty quick, pretty quick, seven thirteen soon.
Okay, thank you. And last, Mr. Pavlis is in attendance regarding a request to cover utility bill at the Curling Club. That doesn't look like Mr. Pavlis to me, but he'll do.
Morning, Your Worship. Council, thank you for seeing us today. I'm here for, on behalf of Stefan, who is supposed to be here on behalf of Tracy Stanky, so forgive me. I know that you have a letter, which I brought. I've read it over. I was away on holidays last week, but I'm here to answer any questions if there's any pertaining to what we're, what we're asking for.
Well, what you're asking for, I guess, is relief from the utility bill. Is that what?
That's correct.
Cut to the chase here, eh?
Yeah. The building is quite big, large. Last year, we've noticed a very large increase, probably it looked like thirty percent increase in the utility costs. Currently, over the years, we've only, we've only gained ten percent on our membership, which, and now our utilities are thirty percent. So we're struggling to pay them and, of course, operate the building, so.
Questions, Councillor Parswell?
Yeah, I have a number of questions. First question, you cite the annual fee and you say, you talk about neighboring communities. What was the scope of your review of neighboring? Was it just the peace region of British Columbia or did it northern Alberta or what was it?
Basically, the area around us, yeah, the peace area, along with Grand Prairie, Fort St. John. Trying to stay competitive with the rates that everybody's offering.
Okay. The second question, again, with that reference group in mind. What are the, what's the arrangements they have from the point of view? How do they operate? Do they have a building owned by a civic government of some sort and then they lease it from them? Or how do they do it?
I'm not sure, okay, personally. I know other members such as Tracy have done, done some research into that.
Yeah.
And they spoke to managers and, and things, but I'm not sure. The consensus I'm getting is that we're all similar on the same playing field as far as the building being owned by the municipalities as such. And I know that they're also struggling. Things are, you know, from year to year, up and down. And it, as, as a whole, the, the members don't pay all the operating costs. Like, I just want to clarify that. There's things like the bonds bills that a lot of members don't go into. But, and the bar and the food and everything combined sort of helps pay for the, the season, I guess, so to speak, as well as offsetting that with weddings and things in the summertime that we try to utilize the building for and whatever we can use it for. But basically, we're struggling to get more members in there, obviously, that, that would help. But that's tough to do. And look for other ways of using the building to try to generate revenue to help costs.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I thought.
That's okay.
Councillor Parswell?
One, one last question. You said the other Curling Clubs are struggling. Is that, do you know why? Is it a drop in membership or is it just that they're, let's say, their membership fee is insufficient to cover their costs?
I, no.
Sounds like a boat.
I don't know if I should comment because I don't really know for sure, but I've heard at our meetings that it's partly to do with some, like, I know that last year, the membership dropped. And basically, that's, that's the only reason that I can understand, is the membership drop. But it, it doesn't pay for the whole, the whole, the bill at the end of the year, so to speak. But, so I mean, that's gonna be a little bit of an impact when you lose so many members and then maybe the next year, they come back for whatever reason. It's sort of one of those, it's not a consistent membership.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, councillor.
So did the Curling Club receive rent or anything from the Legion? Like, when they were in there, did the Curling Club actually receive any revenues from them?
We, how that worked is we went into an agreement with the Legion to, as a per-day value. And we monitored that per-day value, which was two hundred and forty dollars a day is what we needed from the Legion to be profitable and to get what we needed. Now, I'm not sure what the line, where the line was as far as the two hundred and forty, down to where we weren't making anything, but we were below that line for the duration of the eight months that they were in there. So basically, we couldn't carry on with them any longer. But it was basically a percentage of their income is how, how we drew up the agreement. It wasn't a rental agreement per se, but just off of revenues. And that's why we kept the liquor license and they let theirs lapse and we kept control of the bar and, and staff. Like, we staffed it for the Legion and were there to offer the services and they were to, to utilize it and, and bring in revenue that way.
Thank you, Ron. Is that okay, Cheryl? Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I got that stupid lawnmower on me again. Yeah, so you're saying in the end, the agreement with the Legion did not get you any revenues that could have helped the club out in any way?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Parswell, did you have another question?
Just to try to get a good understanding, looking at your revenue, your membership revenue and utility revenue from two thousand and two to two thousand and fourteen, it doesn't seem to be a great variance between that, those figures over that year. You know, I mean, some years, it's thirty, some thousand dollars difference, sometimes it's twenty-eight. But so is there something precipitated this issue that's not disclosed in these figures from the point of view of having to come to council to pick up thirty-one thousand dollars utility bills?
Well, I think from, I'm speaking, not looking at the information, but the, over the years, the utility bills have gone up excessively.
Yes, I've got those figures here.
No, now, that, that being said, if they continue to go up, which they will, we're at a, a line where we're barely viable. So the idea is, in long term, if the city could take care of the utility bills, being that, take care of the, the city owns the building, takes care of the utilities, the Curling Club could then survive a little better and also have maybe more funds for different things. Keep it dated. We're, we also need our carpet replaced, which we're working on. There's, there's many different things to try to, try to keep things better. We've also got a new council, which, there's a lot of younger members on the coun, oh, sorry, council, but.
Executive?
Executive, sorry, thank you. So they're looking at different ideas to bring in new, younger members rather than, you know, I, I asked my daughter and my son, what do they think of when they think of the Curling Club and they think of old people? So I, we need to change that around and, and make it a fun and happy place and younger, youthful place so that maybe, maybe then we'll get more members. So we're, we're looking at lots of avenues to try to, to do some different things, but it all costs money. And we just think this, this would be a, a great relief if, if this could happen. And then that would help us survive that much easier.
Thank you. Another one, councillor?
Well, hi, don't worry. Yes, do you have then some long-term plan that's been formalized to address these issues?
Well, currently, I think our motivation is right now is we've, we've got curtains being, that have been ordered through the oilmen, thankfully for them. They, and what this is gonna do is utilize the building a little more for weddings.
Yeah.
They'll be a permanent figure in there. They'll help dress up the ice. And, and so that's a, that's a big touch. It'll, it'll divide the Curling Rink in half, which we hear a lot of complaining about. And that's the reason we lose a few venues is because it's so big. And then sometimes it's not big enough. There's also, we need tables and chairs and things to outfit it so that we can make it a business more for the summertime, not just, you know, whoever wants to rent it. We can maybe outfit it so that it's ready to go that much easier. Hopefully, that'll increase revenue. And then that also helps the oilmen. They don't have to pay for the curtains as much every year. That's a large dollar for them.
Yeah, as for their steak and lobster function.
Right.
Yeah.
So they'll be there. They just get lowered.
Yeah.
In place. And we've got a plan in place to put the hardware in and get those erected in the, in the facility, hopefully by the end of September. And so, I mean, with that and with the committee set up, with the younger people on there, they're looking at dressing up the place, make it a little bit more dated, I guess, you know, put up some current, younger pitchers and, and whatever they've got in their plan. I don't know offhand, but it's in the works.
It's okay. Thank you, Ron, for coming in. Appreciate that. We'll bring this up a bit later in the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor, now, what's your pleasure? Do you want to just move right back to reports or take a short break?
Reports.
Sorry?
Let's go back to reports.
Back to reports, okay. We're at item seven-ten, which is a report from the Director of Infrastructure Sustainability regarding a request to remove the Old Bay Tree Pioneer, the Old Bay Tree Town Hall to Pioneer Village property.
Under that.
Councillor Schuman, seconded by Councillor Kenny. Comments and questions? Councillor Parswell?
The, there's been a lot of work going into securing funding, permits for moving. It's just wait. This will happen as soon as council makes a decision about this. But as is mentioned in the report, this is a sort of a key part of their ten-year capital improvement plan.
Right, right.
It's a few, about the things that will happen in there in conjunction with the Historical Society.
Sure.
Yeah.
Whatever happened, speaking of historical, about the plan to move the Blue Goose Caboose back out there, is that?
Uh, well, that's maybe.
Not an agenda item, I understand that.
Better addressed by staff. Uh, there was some, the need to look at the structural integrity of that.
Okay.
Was brought to attention by, I think it was Duncan, and so perhaps through Jim, can Duncan respond to that question?
Uh, that work hasn't been done yet.
I'm straying a bit here, I'm sorry about that. Okay, uh, you, any other questions then? All in favor? Carried. Who seconded that? Uh, Schuman and?
Kenny.
Kenny, thank you. Uh, seven-eleven is a report, fourteen-sixty-nine, from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding disposition of city-owned property at fourteen-hundred-ninety-second Avenue. Counselor Malkinson and Counselor Kenny. Questions, comments?
Uh, hold on here.
Just for clarity, what is this property, fourteen-hundred-ninety-second? What is that, uh?
I'm gonna show you, Terry.
No, just tell me.
Let's write it by Chamberlain.
Yeah.
This is the one where there's some concern about the environmental integrity of, whether it'd be contaminated, isn't it?
Uh, you have quite a history with this parcel of land. It's a very attractive-looking piece of land. Uh, between Forest Park Drive, uh, which, uh, bound, is its boundary on the east and the Lorant Townhouses, which is its boundary on the west. Um, you have tried to manage the market. Um, in total, we've paid about forty-five thousand dollars in doing environmental assessments and having RFPs prepared. Uh, because you've been attempting to secure a proposal, uh, that you were happy with, uh, not only for the purchase of the land, but for the development of it. Everything that's come back to you, to you, you have rejected. Uh, so we are suggesting now that you simply put it on the market at the appraised value in its current zoning. If someone wishes to buy it, um, for development in its current zoning, great. If they wish to buy it and then ask you for a rezone, great also. Uh, but we're not getting anywhere with trying to roll everything into a single package.
Just, I, I, once again, Tom, where is this exactly? I, I'm having a tough time.
Okay, so, uh, do you know where Forest Park Drive is?
Yes.
Where Mr. Downey lives, Mr. Brand.
Yes.
Okay, um, the, the backyards of the westernmost properties, that's where the property starts.
Yep, okay.
Runs over to where the last of the Lorant and Townhouses are and runs from the roadway north to the community forest.
That's the property that former Counselor Lepke at one time said had been an old dump from the uh,
For an environmental assessment, it came up clean.
Yeah, okay.
That's the one.
And there were a couple of proposals, uh,
Yeah.
That were turned down.
Okay, I'm sorry. What's your position on this, Council? Malkinson and Kenny?
If, my, my, uh, as I understand this, the costs that the council has incurred in various facets of making sure this place is, this land is suitable for sale are going to be, uh, are rolled into this appraised value of two ninety-six thousand, so I, I'm going to support the recommendation.
Any other comments? Thank you, uh, Councillors, all in favor? Carried. Okay, report number fourteen, uh, seven-twelve is report number fourteen-one-eighty-one from the Director of Infrastructure regarding servicing feasibility study for the Hanson property. Counselor Malkinson.
Move that, uh, we received this report from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding this servicing feasibility study for the OCP Amendment Bylaw Number four-two-oh-five, twenty-fourteen, and zoning amendment by law number four-two-oh-six, twenty-fourteen. And, uh, further that staff proceed with the notification for a public consultation and a public hearing.
Seconded by Counselor Kenny, thank you. Questions? Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, I've, I've got a little confused with this, um, uh, the big issue is, uh, water, uh, suitable pressure for fighting fires, et cetera, et cetera. I didn't really understand the attachment from urban systems. Um, I, without, uh, in, in, without any notion of, of slighting anything, I just couldn't see, see the point of their, their notification to us, so. So can you just explain what Urban Systems was getting at, uh, in that attachment?
Uh, yes, through your worship, Urban Systems is saying that at the moment, uh, the heavy industrial uses, not heavy industrial, but the numerous industrial uses that are proposed in the rezone could not, uh, be serviced with sufficient fire flow. Uh, that ways of doing that are, um, the proponent could construct their own storage and pumping onsite, or that, uh, they could contribute to the city constructing, uh, a fire flow reservoir in the quadrant or the zone that that is, uh, uh, part of. Uh, but at the moment, um, the uses that the rezoning would allow couldn't all be built up. That's what the memo from Urban Systems is saying. Uh, that is, and staff's reached out for legal opinion on this, and that's no reason not to go ahead with the rezone. Um, you can go to public hearing and see if, uh, uh, the public is okay with you rezoning the lot. Um, the issue about the building will fall to whoever owns the property and wishes to actually develop, rather than the zoning it's held in. Uh, and the owner wishes to go ahead with the rezoning even though it will zone for properties that can't at the moment be built on.
Okay.
Uh, thank you. Any other questions? Ready for the vote? All in favor? And that's carried.
Yeah.
Uh, item seven-thirteen is a report from the Deputy Director of Corporate Administration regarding ALR exclusion applicants Diamond J Farms and Loizell Investments. Counselor Kenny?
I'll move the recommendation that report number fourteen-one-seventy-one from the Deputy Director of Corporate Administration regarding agricultural land reserve exclusion applications be received. Further, that staff be directed to submit the following applications for exclusion from the agricultural land reserve to the Agricultural Land Commission. Diamond J Farms, fifty-one and eighty-one Highway Two, uh, hundred-and-seventeen acre parcel legally described as any quarter of Section One Township Seventy-eight, Range Fifteen, W six-M PRD, accept plan, et cetera.
Thank you.
And Loizell Investments Limited, uh, twelve-four-four-zero-eight Street, a forty-eight-point-seven hectare parcel legally described as Lot B, Peace River Regional District Plan.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Parslow. Questions, comments? I'm sorry, Cheryl. Questions or comments on that? She's gone, cut the grass. Okay, hearing nothing, uh?
I'm not gone, I'm just having a question.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? And it's carried. Thank you. Okay, we're down now to bylaws. Item eight-one.
I move.
There is, uh, Counselor Malkinson.
I move it, your worship. Temporary borrowing bylaw for capital roadwork and sidewalk projects. I move it.
Can we do all five at one?
Yeah.
Okay, Counselor Parslow, seconder. Questions, comments? All in favor? Carried. Eight-two is a report from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding zoning amendment. Uh, go ahead, uh, Counselor Parslow.
I'd like to move the third and reading and the adoption of zoning amendment fourteen-twelve, bylaw number four-two-two-six, two thousand and fourteen.
Seconded by Counselor Kenny. Mr. Schute.
I just can't let this opportunity pass by.
Yeah, I'm missing, I can see the look on your face, sir.
What this is, is you correcting, uh, an error in the text that confused vertical with horizontal.
Yeah.
Which completely confirms the citizens' view that public sector employees sometimes have difficulty distinguishing between the two, so just thought I'd let you.
Appreciate those, appreciate those comments. Uh, that was moved by, uh, I don't remember now.
I moved it.
Parslow and, uh,
Counselor Kenny.
Kenny, thank you. Anyone, no more questions, uh, ready for the vote? All in favor? And it's carried. Eight-three. A report regarding, or a bylaw report regarding, uh, noise control amendment. Help me out with this, somebody. Counselor Dun, Parslow?
Okay, I would like to move the re-recommendation that report number fourteen-dash-one-seven-four from the Director of Corporate Administration, re's noise control amendment by law be received. Further, that noise control amendment by law number four-two-three-seven, two thousand and fourteen be given first three readings.
Seconded by Counselor Kenny, thank you. Questions and comments? Counselor Malkinson?
I was wondering, your worship, or Mr. Chair, if there were anybody, if there was anybody here that could, uh, maybe speak to the nature of the complaints that have been received by bylaw enforcement about this. I, my, my only fear in, uh, uh, supporting this resolution is that, uh, you know, we have some complaints from people that, uh, we're violating our bylaw and our response to those folks is to change our bylaw, you know?
Uh, through your worship, that's exactly correct. Um, because of our new circumstance, which is that traffic is vibrant on Alaska and Eighth Avenue, certainly throughout working hours and beyond. Uh, it is now necessary for us to do our boulevard work, uh, very early in the mornings. Uh, so, uh, two to four in the morning is when we do watering and boulevard maintenance because by five-thirty or six in the morning, the traffic is so heavy that you would be, uh, placing the workers in danger and you would be disrupting traffic. Uh, the bylaw currently doesn't allow that. We're asking to change the bylaw to do that. The alternative is we will stop having, uh, bylaw, or boulevards maintained on Eighth and Alaska. Um, I don't recommend that. I recommend that you allow those crews to be out.
Counselor Malkinson?
Yes, I, I appreciate, uh, uh, Jim's words. I, the, the distinction that, uh, I suppose I was trying to have identified was, you know, one that, you know, Dawson is becoming a busier place and, uh, not, uh, you know, I, I suppose for the sake of, uh, the person that complained and, or the people that complained in the first place.
Any other questions or comments? Ready for the vote? All in favor? It's carried. Eight-four is a zoning, Director of Corporate Infrastructure, a zoning amendment by law four-two-three-six. Counselor Dun, Dun, Kenny?
Should I bring it up here?
The long one again.
Okay, I'll move the recommendation that report number fourteen-one-seven-three from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding zoning amendment fourteen-dash-fourteen, bylaw number forty-two-thirty-six, two thousand and fourteen be received. Further, that zoning avenue from, further that zoning am, I got lost here. Zoning amendment fourteen-dash-fourteen, bylaw number forty-two-thirty-six, two thousand and fourteen, to rezon the property located at fifteen-oh-one, one-hundredth Street, or one-hundredth Avenue from, uh, commercial service zone to RS two residential single and duplex zone. Be given first and second readings and further that staff be directed to publish the required notice for a formal public hearing.
Seconded by Counselor Malkinson. Questions and comments? Uh, hearing none. Uh, all in favor? Carried. Item eight-point-five is a report from the Director of Infrastructure regarding a zoning amendment by law for, uh, Mr. Gary Loizell. Counselor Parslow?
I move the report number fourteen-dash-one-eight-zero from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, re zoning amendment fourteen-dash-fifteen, bylaw number four-two-three-eight, two thousand and fourteen be received. Further, zoning amendment fourteen-dash-fifteen, bylaw number four-two-three-eight, two thousand and fourteen, proposing to rezon the properties located at, located at five-oh-five and six-oh-one, one-hundred-and-sixteenth Avenue, from C-four, commercial service zone to C-two, commercial general zone, be given first and second readings. And further, that staff be directed to publish the required notice for a formal public hearing.
Thank you. Seconder, Counselor Kenny. Questions and comments? Ready for the vote? All in favor? And it's carried. Thank you. Uh, we're on now to mayor's business. Did you wanna comment on the Northeast B.C. Resource Municipalities Coalition, Jim, in the absence of the mayor?
Uh, yes, through your worship, just to advise council that the, uh, any B.C. Resource, uh, Municipalities Coalition is holding a kickoff event on September eighth in Fort St. John. Uh, that would, uh, hopefully involve all members of council from all of the participating councils, so you'll be getting an invite for that and being asked RSVP. Uh, there will be a morning business session, uh, then there'll be a luncheon speaker, um, former Minister Colin Hanson will be the luncheon speaker. And then there will be a, uh, uh, formal signing ceremony, media event following.
Thank you.
Heads up to put that in your calendar.
Okay. And do you have any comments on the Fiscal Gap Committee?
Uh, yes, through you, your worship, uh, Shelley and I are actually here, um, uh, to advise you that we, despite extending the deadline and despite, uh, direct recruiting potential membership uh, that council members had forward to us, we have not been able to secure sufficient members, uh, for the Fiscal Gap Committee uh, for it to do the work that was originally intended. Um, our recommendation to you is that you dispense with the committee, which was Plan A, and direct me to bring you Plan B at your next meeting. Uh, the concept behind the committee was based on your findings in the Fiscal Gap, which was that uh, transformational change that would address that gap needs to have buy-in from the community. And the committee was contemplated to be a, uh, cross-section of the community that could be used as a focus group to ensure that the messages were resonating. Um, there isn't too much use in it if it's, uh, few members of narrow, uh, interest and uh, so I don't yet know what Plan B would be, but it appears the citizens are not particularly interested in Plan A at the moment.
Thank you. Counselor Malkinson?
I'm just curious how many, uh, uh, folks we did that, uh, did express interest in joining the committee?
I think we have six now, do we not?
We actually had, uh, we actually had, um, two applications come in. And then just even this morning, there was eight that said, let my name stand, but they, um, didn't, uh, fill out an application. Uh, two are, uh, one is confirmed, they're running for council, the other one who's interested in running for council. And, um, altogether, we tried thirty-seven people, so.
Thank you. Counselor Parslow?
Yes, uh, my engagement with community members, uh, is quite surprised with the, with the response, but there's a, there's a also a sentiment out there that believe that, uh, that's what we get elected to do.
Right.
I fully support, uh, Jim's, uh, our CAO's, uh, concept, absolutely. But, uh, if the community's not ready, uh, and by the way, a lot of people say we're just so busy with, uh, our, keeping up with our work, we can't, uh, so there's all that going on, different dynamics and so on, but it doesn't mean that the Fiscal Gap just disappears, it's still there.
Right.
And so I would, uh, like to move that we direct staff to present a Plan B to us at a suitable time.
Counselor Malkinson, seconding. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Uh, I have a note here, water slash Bear Hole Lake, Jim?
Uh, yes, through your worship. Uh, at this moment, water is still flowing over the weir at the Kiskatna, and I see there's a little bit of moisture falling, that's very good.
Oh, yeah.
Um, our reservoirs are all, uh, full or nearly full. Uh, we don't have any shortage of water at the moment. Um, the forecast is not encouraging going forward, um, and so our intention is to do a controlled release at Bear Hole Lake sometime this week, um, so as to build up flows. Um, that is more forward-looking towards, uh, the winter, basically, uh, than any emergent need at the moment. Uh, and we do want to test, uh, it's important to us that we test Bear Hole every year to make sure that we can keep replicating the, uh, success we've had, so. Uh, that's where we're at, uh, but there is no further water conservation measures on your horizon at the moment. There's no uh, daily usage is well below what we are, we are cut back at the moment to half of what, um, our maximum draw from the Kiskatna is. We're cut back to half of that, so we're cut back to around nine thousand cubic meters a day. Uh, but our use is around seventy-five hundred to eight thousand cubic meters a day, so we're having no trouble keeping the reservoirs full. reservoirs full.
Thank you. And Counselor Parslow.
Yeah, it's just a comment and then a question. I've been away for a while and just prior to council meeting, saying, you know, three locations I was at, they all had water conservation posted in, all over the place. So, there are some people, I think, in our community who need to understand that water conservation practices, we're not the only community. It seems, it seems to be stage one at least, province-wide, some conservation efforts, but there's some strict, strict water conservation measures, at least in the lower mainland and southern part of Vancouver Island where I was visiting. So, the second thing that I need to understand, and this isn't because I disagree with it at all, just, you know, Jim just shared about release from the Bear Hole Lake to prepare for winter. Could, could you just, without getting too technical, just so I understand, what, what would the release help us with as it relates to winter?
Okay, so, people may or may not know that the very little water you see in the Kiskatna River at the Kiskatna Park doesn't reflect what we have stored in the Kiskatna for withdrawal. So, the way to see that is to go to our water page on the website and click on the icon and watch live. We have a camera out there, like a traffic camera at Summit Lake, we have a camera at our weir. What you will see is that we have a significant reservoir built up behind the weir in the Kiskatna. So, how we do this is near our intake, there is a weir that creates a reservoir. At the moment, that reservoir is as high as it can be because water is flowing over down the fish ladder. As winter arrives, it's important that we continue to have that depth of reservoir there so that we can draw throughout the winter from it. We are test releasing from Bear Hole because we wish to make sure that water will still find its way from Bear Hole to the weir. We will probably release for about a week and monitor the flow through and if it reaches, the same percentages reach the weir that have done the last two years, we don't need it for now, so we will shut it off until we do need it. We're just, it's just a verification test that we're doing right now.
Right, thank you. Uh, I, under Mayor's business, I have leftover from the delegations, Mr. Swanson, do we want to deal anything with that? Go ahead, Counselor Parslow.
Just a, a comment, I mean, we've had some other incidences, I can recall, where people's toilets kept running, et cetera. I mean, I think it's the stance we've taken, I think it's, the only stance we can take is that people are responsible for their residential dwellings or commercial properties and it's terribly regrettable what's happened and I empathize, but if we, if we do it for one, we must be prepared to do it for all and I'm not wishing to use a pun, we're opening a floodgate if we do have problems and so I can't see how we can accommodate this at all.
Right. If they don't pay, then everybody pays as well, so.
Okay, there's a matter of the Legion that was brought forward, they were asking for some assistance. Yes, Counselor Parslow.
I can't conceive of this community not having a Legion without an office. I mean, you're concerned about a canteen, well, that's, I empathize with that as well, but I, I'm sure that they and others will find other places to have as a, sort of a movable canteen of some sort, but an office so that they can continue their functions is highly desirable, so I, I just wonder if staff can, once we get the Calvin Crook moves all done, maybe we can, at some future date, have this matter brought back so that we could give staff a chance. I mean, I don't know, again, there's issues around not only communication, who's going to be responsible for their telephone line, et cetera, et cetera, utilities, maintenance, I don't know. So, I think staff, I'm empathetic to it, I'd like to support the suggestion put forward by the Legion about the old Legion, Regional Library building, but I think I'd like to know if there's any cost implications and anything else we need to be taking. So, can I move that that be brought back for council consideration at a September meeting? Is that, that September fifteenth or?
Through your worship, we can certainly explore the options with the Legion, but as you say, the sooner I, soonest I could bring it back to you is September fifteenth. So, in the event that the Curling Club moves aggressively to discontinue the Legion tenancy at the Curling Club, I don't have any emergency situation I can do, so. We couldn't intervene in that process, but I can bring you back something September fifteenth about where you could locate them and what it would cost you or them. We do not take rent from the, from the Archives at the moment, so, at that building, so it's not, that would not be a case in which you'd be foregoing rent. It's being provided rent-free to the Historical Society at the moment.
Okay, that was moved by Parslow, seconded by Malkinson then. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
He has a question.
Well, I'm sorry, Counselor.
Jim, you mentioned that, you know, absent direction right now, that were the Curling Club to move aggressively to end the tenancy of the Legion, would there be any sort of, any sort of location or readout that those folks could occupy? Is there any?
Well, through your worship, what I'm saying is it would be up to the good graces of the community to find them temporary storage while the rest of this was be worked, be worked out.
I understand.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Are you ready for the vote? All in favor? And that's carried. We have the matter of the Curling Club that's looking for some assistance with their utility bill. I think that's what they want it paid for. Counselor Parslow.
Yeah, I am always, always concerned about precedent and understanding, I, I want, everyone to be treated fairly, obviously, and consistently, so I'm, I understand their, some of their issues, for sure, but what I'm concerned about is, I need to get a clear picture of what are, what are the other arrangements we have with other organizations, i.e. from the point of view of a city-owned facility, that the city, does the city, to what extent does the city pay utilities for other organizations and why do we do that? I think we need to get, I just need to get a clarity on that. I mean, you know, immediately comes to mind, you know, we just mentioned about the Archives, but what about the art gallery, what about the Calvin Crook Center and so on? I mean, I don't want us to be unfair to the Curling Club, I don't want us to create a president we can't live with and I just need, so I'm going to make, make a motion that staff provide a report to council at the, at September the fifteenth meeting, if that's feasible, on our, on the situation in the community as it relates to the use of city-owned facilities by other groups. How do we, what do we, what do we pay? What do we take care of? What do they take care of? And see if there's a consistent pattern. So, that's, that's where I'm at with this one.
Seconded by Malkinson. And Jim?
Through your worship, there's no way in the world that that report is worth, or is available at a September meeting, that is months of work. Every, every facility has its own history. You've made the decision that it's your responsibility as a council to provide an arena, fact two, and you subsidize that over a million dollars. You've made the decision that it's your job to provide a swimming pool, you subsidize that to a million dollars. I have to go through all of that, I have to go through all the history that was in the fees and charges rationale.
Yeah.
No, there is no pattern. Everybody's got their own history. The Curling Club, what, has never traditionally been viewed by council in the same way that you view an arena, so on the face of it, that's unfair. You pay all the utilities for the arena and you recover seventy-five percent of the cost if it is, if it is some groups, fifty percent if it is others. There's, there's no pattern, there's absolutely no pattern. Some things you have decided are your responsibility, recently you decided providing an art center was your responsibility and that when an art center went decrepit and needed to be replaced, that you would replace it and in that case, you're paying utilities for that group. You've never made a decision that if the Curling Club became decrepit, you would replace it, that's a decision that's in your future. So, anyway, that's a piece, that's another Jim Shute book.
Yeah.
Equivalent to the historical narrative for the multiplex, it's going to take me several months to write that report.
What about Lakota? What's the deal there?
So, Lakota, I don't even know what the deal is on utilities at Lakota.
So, the city basically pays the utilities in exchange for them doing the management of the facility and providing capital upgrades.
I thought Global Spectrum looked after the management of Lakota, no? Or is it some maintenance?
No, the, no, they don't.
In Canada, looks after the maintenance, but the actual operations of the Lakota Center?
Yeah.
So, basically, instead of exchanging checks, we just cover the utilities in an exchange transaction.
Yeah, I have no desire to create another Jim Shute book, although I do, I do enjoy reading his books, especially the Fiscal Gap one, but the, so let me put the question another way, are there, are there potential groups that might come forward with a similar request, once they hear?
Absolutely, the golf course leaps immediately to mind.
Any others?
So, your current policy says operational amounts are not eligible under your grant process. You either have to have made a conscious decision that it's a quote fee-for-service, meaning a curling club is something you would run if the club didn't, an art center is something you would run if K-PAC did not. Once you make that baseline decision, then the arrangements for that group are put into fee-for-service. Your granting process is not for operational monies of any kind, it's for capital expenditures because you're attempting to avoid building reliance. You don't want the Curling Club to be reliant on taxpayer money to operate when you haven't made the decision that if they closed, you would run the curling ring. So, you've made the decision that if the art center closed, you would run it. For better or worse, you've made that decision. You've made the decision that you will run an arena. You have not made a decision that you would run a curling club or a golf course and so until you make the base level decision, they don't qualify for a fee-for-service arrangement. You've made the decision you would run an Agroplex if the group stopped, but that decision's never been made on, on behalf of the Curling Group. So, that's the, the, the process by which you would accommodate this request is you would say yes, curling is integral to our way of life, it is a responsibility of council, it is something that if the club discontinued its operations, you would take over running the curling and hence you could provide them a fee-for-service. And then the golf course, whose utilities are far more than thirty-one thousand, would certainly consider that a great precedent and in fairness, would request the same. And then you would need to make that decision, but the opportunity for you to start over and make discretionary decisions about this, where you sort everything out one against the other, is exactly what we're recommending in the Fiscal Gap, but it's not where we're at at the moment.
Thank you. Counselor Malkinson.
What does this say for the sustainability of the Curling Club, your worship? I, just what comes to mind as we considered the arrangements for the Calvin Crook Center and their moving over there just this summer, was that some of the costs that were not covered at the previous location would be covered at the new location on the basis that, you know, it'd be, it'd be done right and some things just wouldn't be able to be done absent support from the city. And I suppose the principle that you just outlined about this, you know, discretionary versus a service that the city would keep up, were it not, you know, notwithstanding the involvement of these other groups that put their time and effort to making them run, well, I think that principle may be a distinction here, but when I, when I just think about, when I think about the net zero or just reality, I just am conflicted a little bit.
It's a struggle for council going forward under the Fiscal Gap, if council takes on Fiscal Gap, is going to be that that whole concept of first in time, first and right, you actually have no time machines and you cannot change history. So, tough decisions that are going to have to be made going forward really are going to be disproportionately affecting folks who were later in line rather than those who were first in line. If you are unable to take on new projects, initiatives because of financial constraint, then people who have ideas going into the future or who require help going into the future that didn't in the past, just are in a situation where they get fewer yeses than people who came along fifty years ago, that's just going to be the reality of the thing.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Parslow.
The, in the presentation, we, there were a number of ideas about how they're going to try to improve their revenue. I'd like to see the Curling Club present a formal sustainability plan to council before I am prepared to make any decision on this. So, I believe I made a motion, just on a technical point here, that was seconded and I think Jim made some comments and I don't wish to impose, as I said, another Jim Shute book on us, on this matter, not that I knock him for those things at all, so I think we need to dispense with that motion. Am I correct, Brenda? It was moved and seconded?
Yes, that motion will need to be dealt with.
Yeah.
Okay, you.
So, you can defeat it and we can move on.
Thank you. Okay, and in regards to the motion, all in favor? Opposed? And it's, Schuman?
Yeah, I'm opposed.
It's defeated. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that the Curling Club present a, their long-term plan for sustainability to council at a future council meeting.
Be requested.
Yeah, yeah. Seconded by Counselor Kenny. Comments and questions? Yeah, we can request anything we want if they, might throw rocks at you. All in favor? Carried, thank you. That's all that I have on this, the Mayor's business. Next is the diary, Jim.
Yes, Duncan's going to do an update on Calvin Crook Center.
Thank you.
Morning.
Morning.
So, update on the Calvin Crook Center, start with the, the current status. So, the Calvin Crook Center received occupancy on July thirty-first, also received substantial completion granted to Haggy on July thirty-first. So, in short, the building, life safety devices are in place and the building is now occupiable. K-PAC has begun moving their items in there, their operation in there, they're slowly transitioning over the summer for the September eighth start date and they're just kind of making that space their own. As far as substantial completion, Haggy has some deficiency items remaining and as we discussed kind of last meeting, that it's less than two percent of the overall contract in order for them to get substantial completion. So, they're working through those items and now we're in that holdback release period of fifty-five days, so we're working through that. Terry Hannon and I met with the user groups that are moving into the Calvin Crook Center on August sixth, just to discuss the transition from the Grandview School to the Calvin Crook Center. There are representatives from each group, they had an opportunity to view their space, bring forward any concerns and the majority of the meeting was spent discussing just the parameters of K-PAC's lease and what the city expectation is for K-PAC, which essentially... lease and what the city expectation is for K-PAC, which essentially falls on them as well as far as access and some of the other areas. We also talked about the moving dates. So, they're going to be starting moving this week, some of the groups, and will move between now and September 5th. So, the idea is, is the groups won't be able to function in that space until after the opening ceremonies in September 8th. So, we've left it in their hands as to when they want to make that transition, knowing that the space won't be available. Majority of the groups will most likely move that first week of September, right before the ceremony gets set up, and then begin operations on September 8th. Work remaining in the facility, so there is still some items remaining. We're working on the theater equipment. It was originally scheduled for early August, but it has been moved, and now it's taking place next week. We have some training scheduled at the end of the week for K-PAC on that theater equipment, on the sound and the lighting. We're also repairing some of the cupboards that delaminated and some smaller items. We're working through the new control system in the building, looking at the DDC. We're receiving some training on how to operate that system now. It's a comprehensive mechanical system, and will take some time for staff to, to learn where everything is and learn how to operate it properly. It's, it's summer, so we do have that advantage, that it's not winter, and we're running around trying to figure out how to get things to work properly. So, we're there, and we're just working through that training. K-PAC is currently working on the exterior playground equipment. It's very close. It's really just landscaping now. That's a licensing requirement for the, for the daycare. They're also working on the coffee bar, which is, I would say, probably 50 or 60% complete, and is anticipated to be completed here in the next couple of weeks. And they're working in the childcare space, just preparing that for, for inspection, and, and just getting ready for the kids to start operations, and they're in the, K-PAC to start operations. Last item is just around budget. There's requests to update on budget. So, the total project budget was 17 point, or 17,631,000. Costs as of August 15th are 17,264,788 dollars, the difference of 366,212 dollars. We still have some outstanding consultant invoices. We're still waiting on a final claim from Haggy for some of their deficiency work and some other items with the fire alarm system, and there's just some other minor expenditures. So, that number will be updated as we near the final completion of everything. But for all intent purposes, the building is now occupied by K-PAC. We've turned the keys over to them, and the users will be transitioning in there in the next two, three weeks.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'm assuming, I'm assuming that all the users are making the move. I heard, I know there were some problems for some, but they are all now making the move?
At August 6th, when we met with the user groups, I explained the process, if they, if they were looking to stay in their previous location, or if they had any concerns regarding the agreement, how to approach council to make those requests. I didn't see any on the agenda today. I understand that maybe in September, the Historical Society is going to attend, but at that meeting, nobody came forward and noted or stated that they would not be moving in.
Just one second question. The coffee shop, has that been subleased yet?
That is, K-PAC has constructed the cafe and will sublease it. I'm not sure who the group is, but they are working with a user. There is a user, sorry, there is a leasing.
Yeah.
Thank you, Duncan.
Thank you.
Item 11, the consent calendar.
I move the consent calendar, your worship.
Thank you. And seconded by Counselor Kenny. All in favor? Carried. Strategic priorities chart, Jim?
Nothing new on the chart, your worship. Paul, that will be at the next meeting.
Thank you. Question and answer period?
There's no one signed up?
Thank you. Committee of the whole media question period?
I have two questions. Sorry, Terry. I know you're itching to get up here. For our 5.1, what was the motion that was carried? Was it just received for information, or?
I don't know what 5.1 was.
It was from B.C. Hydro about electric beautification projects.
Yes, it was saved for information.
Yes.
And for the development permit for AltaGas, do you, I haven't read the report yet, but do you know if they had to complete some sort of environmental assessment process, or anything like that before they can begin development?
Through your worship, our understanding is that they are under the sizes that would require a reference to the Environmental Assessment Office?
Thank you.
And I have a few questions. Also on the gas plant, would that be the first?
Sorry?
The gas plant, the AltaGas?
Yes.
Would that be the first LNG plant within city limits, or are there other such facilities?
Yes, it would be, Jim.
Certainly the first one within our limits. I believe it's the first one in B.C., is what they told us.
I would think so, yeah.
There are a couple of facilities in Alberta run by AltaGas.
Yeah.
So, it's for processing of?
It's for the creation of liquefied natural gas. In this case, the, the, instead of being put in a tanker and shipped overseas, it's going to be put in trucks and shipped north. But it's, again, it's the same deal. It's for people to, so it can be, the natural gas can be transported and used in different locations.
Okay. And the Baytree Hall in Alberta, what is that, and why is it being moved here? What's the significance to Dawson Creek of that building?
That's probably something Counselor Parslow could answer.
The South Peace, the Miles, the South Peace Historical Society, the Mile Zero Parts Society do not accept, do not operate with the notion that there's a distinct border between the Alberta piece and the South Peace, you know, the B.C. piece. And, and so, and that's just a reality. I mean, a lot of people who live in, over the border there, do their business here, and have historically interacted with people in the B.C. side of the piece. So, this hall is a historic hall to the Baytree area, and it's been looked at by the Mile Zero Parts Society, and it was found to be in good condition, and would be, they felt it was of historical significance in consultation with members of the Historical Society, that it would be a shame to see it abandoned and disintegrate. And so, they planned to have it as a sort of centerpiece for a number of, of displays and interactive things for visitors. I'm not sure what exactly planned to go in there, but, and I forget the exact dating of the building, but it was certainly early 19, early 20th century, yeah.
Moving on to Curling Club, there was a motion that was defeated there. I believe the one that was passed was that they presented some sort of long-term sustainability plan. But, Counselor Parslow, I guess it was your motion before it was defeated. What were you asking for exactly?
Well, the presenter made reference to, first of all, the enhancement that was going on there with the purchase by the South Peace Oilman's Group of curtains. There was talk about the enhancing the use of the facility during the summer months, outreach to youth and so on. I'd want to see, you know, what are their goals? What are their mileposts for moving towards sustainability, rather than just relying on the city to pick up the tab for utilities? So, I think if they, if they, obviously, from the presenter, there's been some discussion. I want to see what it is, and to see if we can augment that somehow, provide some critique of it, and know that this isn't, because I think the presentation is that we, if the city accepts the utility bill now, it's going to be a sort of expectation on an annual basis. And I'm very concerned that groups just come to rely on the city. They need to work hard to be self-reliant.
Did you say, I wish they had to take you there?
No, it was a, remember, I said be required, and I was pointing out that there'd be a request. They may decide not to. I mean, so there's no date for that. I believe in the motion. Just a request.
I'll take so.
And I think this is my last question. I wasn't entirely clear from the presentation about the Legion, but are they homeless at the moment, or have they been granted some sort of grace period by the folks of the Curling Club?
Curling Club has a, sorry.
I think, your worship, that they have not vacated by the date that they were told to vacate, and the Curling Club has not done anything about that, seems to be. Mr. Roberts was careful not to characterize it as an extension from the Curling Club, but did confirm that his stuff wasn't sitting outside on the pavements.
Was it just complete coincidence that they both happened to be here on the same day?
It is, actually, although I'm sure neither of them believed that.
Yeah, that was somewhat handy for me, at least. Two birds and one stone.
Thank you. Andrea?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Anything else? We have no close, as I understand it, so entertain a motion to adjourn. Counselor Kenny, Counselor Wilkinson, all in favor? Carried. Thank you, Cheryl.
Thanks, guys. Have a great week. I guess I'll talk to you next week at a special meeting.
Have a good holiday.
Thanks. Bye, guys.